Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public meeting of planning for Monday, May 12, 2025. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the Council of the Township in North Glengarry accepts the public meeting of planning agenda on Monday, May 12, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, non-opposed. Accept, ratify the minutes, public meeting of planning, Monday, February 24, 2025. Counselor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Caddell, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the minute of the public meeting of planning of Monday, February 24, 2025.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Motion is carried, non-opposed. All right, moving on to zoning amendment bylaw number Z-032025. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as you know, this is a zoning report, so there will be no voting at this public meeting. We'll vote at the subsequent council meeting. So, this is, this one is for zoning Z-032025. The applicant and owner in this case, Madame Carol Joannette, the location is 3805 County Road 45, Alexandria, Ontario. So, as you see on my map here, it's just west of Alexandria, so heading west on County Road 45. So, it's that large property that you see there in the red box. So, a little zoom in. So, sorry about my, when I did the presentation, the yellow box is a little bit off. So, that, that yellow box there, it's pretty much exactly where the civic number is. So, it's supposed to be exactly where the existing single-family dwelling is. So, that's where, well, I'll explain it later, but that's where we're proposing to build a semi-detached building. So, it's going to be just a little further north than what it shows there. But I wanted to show this, just to explain that we have a narrow entrance where the driveway is, and then it extends right up to the next concession going north. So, this is a little bit further back. So, as you can see, this is our zoning layer. So, there's the Gary River running across. So, we've got some wetlands. We've got industrial rural on the southeast corner. So, it's in between that, in the middle of the property, on the south side of the property. So, the official plan designation for this property, rural district and provincially significant wetlands. So, the PSW is basically around where the Gary River crosses the property. And our zoning designation, so it follows pretty much what the OP says, which is good. We've got some rural, which is all the green area, and some floodplain and wetlands, again, all around the Gary River. So, the purpose for this application, it's to rezone the rural portion of the property from rural to rural special exception 24, to permit a secondary dwelling, so to permit a two dwelling on the property. And in this case, it will be a semi-detached dwelling constructed where the existing single-family dwelling is. So, as you know, we're trying to stay away from, like, site-specific zoning. So, just like, we could, in this case, put the box where exactly the dwelling will be, but this gets very complicated at, like, permits and stuff. So, everything that's rural is being changed to RU24. Everything that's wetland and floodplain will say wetland and floodplain. So, we're not touching that at all. We're just changing the rural portion of the property. So, in this case, we've got frontage of 32 meter on County Road 30, uh, County Road 45, sorry, and then irregular depth, 1,600 meters. So, it's a very deep property, 80 acres of land. So, the purpose, as I mentioned, is to permit a secondary dwelling. So, in this case, it will be a semi-detached dwelling built for the owner's employee. So, the owner, Madame Joannette, is Gator Metal. So, that's Madame, Madame Gator Metal, I guess I could say. So, she's, she's the owner, and this is for employees. So, rural, our current zoning designation for rural only permits one dwelling. So, they're applying for this zoning to have a second one, the semi-detached dwelling. And as you know, the whole thing about this zoning amendment, so this is all encouraged by the province to promote more dwellings. And as you also know, our new zoning bylaw that we're gonna pass will permit secondary dwellings. It, it will not permit semi-detached dwellings. So, that's why I explained the owner. In this case, it's good to do a zoning bylaw because 100% semi-detached, like a mirror image, is not, is not described in the secondary dwelling. It's really like another house or an apartment or something, like a door in the back, a door on the side. That will be permitted 100%, but 100% semi-detached will not be permitted even in rural enact. So, that's why we're passing this, this zoning bylaw. These are mostly being kept for, for towns and for really densification of urban area. But in this case, that's what the owner wanted. So, that's why we're passing this zoning. So, as I explained, semi-detached, approximately 900 square feet per unit. There's no detailed site plan at this point. We're, they're still in the preliminary stage of, of the designs, of septic inspection. So, the existing well will be kept, but the, of course, the septic system will need to be updated to comply with this secondary dwelling. The, the existing dwelling that is there was partly demolished by fire. So, it will be destroyed and removed completely, and the new building will go at a very similar place than what it is before, than what it is now, sorry, which is good because, because of the wrecking yard on the other side of the road, so Gator Metals, there is a 100-meter setback from that property line. So, where the existing dwelling is, it's a perfect location because it, it complies to both the 100-meter from the wrecking yard, and it also complies with the setback from, from the wetlands and floodplain created by the river. So, they, they won't need to, like, do any environmental studies. It's at the same location. So, it respects all the setback for environmental and for our zoning for the wrecking yard. So, that's good. The existing driveway is approximately 275 meter long. So, it's way far past that 100-meter setback. There is one existing civic number. We'll see what we do when they apply for building permit if they, if they want another civic number or A and B, but that'll be, that'll be determined later. So, that's me standing on the road. You see the long driveway and the house at the far end of that driveway there. So, it's very, very far from, from Gator Metals. So, it will not be affected by noise or whatnot. So, whether it's for employees or just a family member or whoever, actually, it will not be affected by the use of the land across the road. And there's also that rural industrial property, the garage, that's also just there on the southeast. So, it's far back enough that it won't be affected. There's gonna be no nuisance on those two dwellings from the existing use at the road. And this is when you drive down the property. That's the, that's the existing house. As you can see, the windows are barricaded. So, it's been very damaged by fire. So, this is all gonna be gone, all going to be gone, sorry. And the new semi-detached will go pretty much at that location. This is a view from the street. So, you see the entrance, the civic number that you see there on your left side. That's for the existing house. And then you see the garage just a little bit past that and Gator Metal on the right side. So, the dwellings are gonna be on your left-hand side, 275 meter, far away from the road. So, just very quickly here, just gonna make sure I mention everything, setback. Yeah, so there's not gonna, like, there's no other planning application required after that. It's really just they can jump right at the building permit stage after that. So, council will not see any other thing other than eventually a building permit and a new building going up. And yeah, so Planning Act gives council the permission to pass these types of bylaw that are actually encouraged by Planning Act and provincial policy statement, as I explained the other day. So, intensification, these are encouraged by both of these documents. SDG official plan, same thing. It permits dwellings and secondary dwellings in rural zones, and this will also be permitted in our new zoning bylaw. So, in conclusion, township, township staff recommends that the site-specific zoning bylaw submitted be approved for the following reasons. So, it's consistent with PPS, conforms to the policies of the official plan, and it's compliant also with our zoning bylaw as it's promote efficient land, efficient use of land and deem appropriate for the subject lands. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, what happens, let's say, I don't know, 10, 20 years from now, when the individual who owns the property wants to then sell it or sell one, so, so one of the units or both of the units or?
They would not be subject to severance. So, the, because it's a semi-detached, it's like, it's like an accessory apartment, really. They would have to stay together. So, it's not like it's two dwellings because they're in rural land. So, they could technically do a severance, although here there's not enough frontage. So, a severance would not go through at the counties because there's not enough frontage. Plus, they're attached together. So, the condition for semi-detached, to split it right in the middle, only applies to residential zone property. So, only within town, not outside. And that's why the semi-detached are not, technically not permitted outside of town.
Thank you. So, the owner obviously knows that.
Of course. I explained it to him. Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jacob. So, no old business, no new business, no notice of motion. Motion to adjourn, Counselor Caddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley. There being no further business to discuss, the public meeting of planning was adjourned at 5:57 p.m.
All those in favor of the motion? The motion is carried, non-opposed. We'll take a five-minute break till the regular meeting of council starts. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of council for Monday, May 12, 2025. I would ask everyone to please stand for the national anthem. Okay, thank you. Welcome to members of council, staff, and the public. To call the meeting to order, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Counselor Manley. Oh, sorry, we're just at the, we're only at the agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, May 12, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or deletions? Counselor Massey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have under Public Works Department, 6B, somewhere there, and four roadside maintenance on the cable installers around the rural roads.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, non-opposed. Adoption of the previous minutes, regular meeting of council, April 14, Committee of the Whole, April 23, special meeting of council, April 23. Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the minutes for the following meeting to be adopted circulated.
Excuse me?
Regular meeting of, meeting of council minutes, Monday, April 14, 2025. Committee of the Whole minutes, Wednesday, April 23, 2025. Special meeting of council minutes, Wednesday, April 23, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, non-opposed. There are no delegations this evening. Staff report, Community Services Department, CS 2025-08, CIP application, Three Main Street South, Alexandria. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of the Township in North Glengarry receives staff report, CS 2025-08, CIP application, Three Main Street South, Alexandria, and that the council approves the community improvement plan project at Three Main Street South, Alexandria, Ontario, as submitted by the property owner, Jean Vaillancourt of Vailla Holdings, and Andre Marcoue of Centre Auditif Glengarry Hearing Center, delegated signing authority. Program C, commercial signage, civic address signage, and commercial oning grant representing a matching grant of 50% up to $2,000, and the total grant being $2,000.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee met on May 5 to review the application for the community improvement plan grant for the location of Three Main Street in Alexandria. So, this property you may be familiar with as being the former Glengarry News building. So, it's remained vacant since December of, I think there's an error here, 2003. But the new owners are looking to revitalize the building by creating some office space on the main level and creating a residential unit on the second floor. So, the commercial tenants will be moving in over the next few weeks and require signage for the building. So, the request as part of Program C of the community improvement plan application will be to remove the existing signage for the previous business, purchase new signage for the new business, the installation costs, and the purchase and installation of gooseneck lighting at that site as well. So, the 2025 municipal budget included $30,000 towards the community improvement plan program. So, this is the first application that we've received so far in 2025. So, as such, there is adequate funding to support moving forward with this project, subject to council's approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
I know the old sign's gonna be removed, and I, I, I thought I'd heard somewhere that it was gonna go to the archives.
I believe it is going to the archives.
Okay.
The Glengarry News sign you're talking about.
Glengarry News sign, yes. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, non-opposed. Okay, moving on to Create to Get Closer program. Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report, CS 2025-09, Create to Get Closer program, and that council approves the partnership through the Create to Get Closer program and subsequent expense of $2,260 from the economic development operating budget, and that council approves of the display of the final art mural on the exterior south-facing wall of the Glengarry Sports Palace.
Okay, thank you. Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, last month, the economic development officer was contacted by an organization called Left Franco de Rôle, who work in partnership with the Official Languages Directorate of the Department of Canadian Heritage on this Create to Get Closer program. So, the idea is to involve youth from a local Anglophone school as well as a local Francophone school to create a permanent rural, uh, mural, excuse me, mural that would be displayed in the municipality. So, the goal is to raise awareness about the partnership and the importance of official language minority communities and symbolize the cooperation between both language communities. So, the role of the municipality, as being requested, would be to purchase the, the supplies associated to the mural in itself, along with a base cost associated to supporting the program. So, as you can see in your packages tonight, that would be a total amount of $2,260, which includes the municipality's base contribution of $1,740, as well as the cost of materials to support the purchase of a 16-by-8-foot outdoor mural with a special varnish for the amount of $520. So, the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Committee did discuss the project at length and were in support of bringing it to council. And they did discuss the idea of putting the final mural on display at the Glengarry Sports Palace, being it would be a high-volume, high-traffic area for a lot of recreation in the surrounding area for both local residents of the area, but those visiting North Glengarry, Alexandria specifically as well. So, it was recommended as a location to put the final project, should council be in support of moving forward with it. It should also be noted that only 15 municipalities across four or five provinces in Canada are given the opportunity to host the project. So, North Glengarry was specifically cited as a community that this project and the organization wanted to bring to the area, just being the prevalence, the prevalence of the Francophone and Anglophone communities here. So, subject to council's approval or any questions, this is my recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Caddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are both school boards on board?
So, what happens is whenever the municipality, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, whenever the municipality agrees to move forward with the project, the Create to Get Closer program actually takes care of doing the coordination with the local schools. So, they would be responsible for seeking out the schools who wish to participate and involving them in coordinating dates and any other particulars with the schools themselves.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Manley, then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great project, and I think that the idea that we're gonna get school boards to maybe work together will be a good, a good thing because too often they're sort of working in isolation. So, I think the idea that they can work together on a project and we can see a, a final result, something similar to that maybe, would be fantastic. So, I'm in definite support of this project.
Good point. Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with Counselor- Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with councillor Manley. This does look like an, an excellent project, certainly very involved. When I read it, I was like, wow, okay, they've thought of everything here, it seems to me. So I'm assuming that it's manageable for the municipality, that there's not too much work there for you, because it looks like there's a lot of work there for somebody. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I have spoken with staff already at the arena, who were actually quite excited by the project as well, to see something potentially be added to that south-facing wall of the Glengarry Sports Palace and add some colour. And so staff are on board with, with moving forward with the project, and it seemed to be manageable in terms of installation and the role of the municipality in terms of coordination seems to be limited. So we're fully on board to move ahead with the project from the Community Services Department.
That sounds great, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, I know when I, when I read about the project, it talked about either when you're putting it, you have a choice to either put it on plywood or on a, some kind of metal surface, which is more durable. Which one have you chosen, since it's going outside?
Correct. So through you, Mr. Mayor, we did end up going with the recommended plywood display. It is a little bit cheaper than moving forward with the other material. And on the basis that the recommendation is, from the organisation, is to use plywood when no more than 20% of the existing wall space would have any other type of flammable material. So we're not at risk of, of any other sources of fire hazards on that wall. So therefore, the plywood is recommended as a suitable material type for this project.
Thank you. Okay, any further, go ahead. Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo same thing, and even if we don't get school boards necessarily working together, ideally the students can set some examples for them. Reading through it, it is, looks to be a really, really well-thought-out programme, and I think a pretty interestingly unique idea and opportunity for the community and for the kids to, to be involved in this. And to have something like that left as a sort of reminder of it, I think is great. So I'm all for it. Looks fantastic.
Okay, thank you. No further questions or comments? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, Public Works Department, PW 2025-12, Updated Proposal for Alexandria Sewage Works Upgrade Design Optimization and Contract Administration Services. Councillor Madden.
Thank you. Moved by, by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives report, PW 2025-12, Updated Proposal for Alexandria Sewage Works Upgrade Design Optimization and Contract Administration Services, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry authorizes the mayor and the CAO clerk to enter into an updated agreement with EVB Engineering to provide design optimization and contract administration services for the Alexandria Sewage Works upgrade for a fixed price of $1,823,202 plus HST as procurement by negotiation under section 21F of the township's procurement policy.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had a few presentations from EVB over, over the last couple of years, and we've been working with them to try and get this project together and, and put it in a way where we're going to see a, a smooth timeline, and we're going to see zero change orders, orders is really the, the goal. So since first starting, we've been digging in, since I first started as director, have really been digging into these drawings, trying to find where the construction complexity is. And in, in my experience in construction, the, every, every dollar that you spend on design and making sure that you work out the project plan is, you know, saves you $3 down the road. So this, this proposal takes into account several design optimizations that can happen to the lagoon to not only reduce our overall capital cost, but to reduce our overall operational cost as well. So one of the main ones, and I, I don't dig into it into the report, because that would, that all comes out in the detailed design, but really on a high level, the disc, switching the sand filters for the disc filters is a huge savings of about a million dollars and huge operational costs. The sand filters, which were in the original design, were originally the only type of tertiary filtration system which could actually meet the, the phosphorus levels, treatment levels that we needed. Now there's, there's new technologies out there. It's a lot easier for the operators to use. We can remove the filters completely, and we just backwash them straight into the, into the lagoon. There's no caking to worry about. So there's, there's a lot of advancements. There's also just optimization of the Sega system, which is our pre-treatment, and essentially that, that's going to solve our ice cover problem. If you remember from Angela's reports a few weeks ago, we have an issue with the lagoon where we're getting a, a buildup of toxins under ice cover. And so what we need to do is aerate that, that material, and when it's under ice, ice cover, we're not getting that contact with the air. So that's the, the basis of the Sega system. It's basically like a reverse French drain, I guess. So we've got some, some granulas, and we're aerating it as it moves through this. So that design's actually optimized now. Nexom, who is the, the chosen supplier for that in our 2017 design, have now optimized it and reduced it by one cell and changed the length. So that's a lot less granulas that we need to use. It also removes a blower building from our tertiary built, treatment building. So just great optimizations to happen. We've been working through, this year so far, we've been working through our standard service agreement with EVB, and we want to, this agreement essentially puts everything, everything together and formalizes it so that we can really start working on the, on the detailed design. That should be complete, that will be complete by the end of this year, and then we'd be ready for, for a tendering. We need to do, we need to go ahead with some of the preliminary work this year. So you'll see, you'll still see reports from me about pre-loading, because we did a geotechnical report last year. We found some oversights in the 2017 design where they didn't find some soft soils. So we want to go and preload that area with granulas, because if you, if you didn't preload it, once you've built your piping systems which interface with your structures, you could get settlement over time of up to six inches where your, your structure and your pipe don't meet each other. So we want to go and preload that this year, so we're ready for construction next year. We are also, I'll also be bringing back another report as well to clean out a, a much larger portion of the lagoon. So we've been going and spending about $100,000 every year to kind of slowly remove material from the lagoon. Now that we have funding, that's eligible funding under the source that we're just going, we want to use some of that contingency fund to clear that out entirely, which was good, because that was something that we were originally planning on doing just as, through, through our regular funding. And if we, if we can clear that all out, then we can go ahead and introduce the air curtain system inside the lagoons, and we're all ready to go. So it's exciting. The whole project's coming together and, but, you know, it's a, it's a really good team. We actually met with Marco today and the, the waterworks operators, because we're really getting down to the, the meat and potatoes of, okay, you guys are going to actually maintain this thing. We're looking at, you know, our, for our outflow, down to the detail level of putting the, the mag meter on the outflow. In the 2017 design, that was in a manhole, because everything needs to flow downhill. This is the piece that's at the lowest point. So it was in a manhole that we needed confined-spaced entry to get into. This lets us change that over for a fluve. I've never been able to say that correctly. It's basically just a, a channel of water, and you bring it put together at a point, and the acceleration in the water gives you your flow, right? And then you can measure that essentially just with a laser, what your, what your level is there, and that, that gives you your level of flow, which means we don't need any confined, confined-spaced entry, except on, you know, maybe once every 20 years, we'll need some to go down and do some maintenance. So very excited by this. It's an upfront cost, of course. You know, it, it would be ideal if we could have taken that 2017 design and then just put it straight into production, but the reality is, the technology's changed. We want to go and optimize it to make sure there's no change orders. So that's what this cost is for.
Okay. Any idea when we will get it out to tender?
Through you, Miss Mayor, yes. So the, it would go out to tender essentially in January of 2026 to, for a contractor. And the, but the preliminary work, those tenders, I'm working on them now, that go out in the next month, to get all that work done by the end of the year. But that wouldn't be part of the, the main construction part, which, which will start in early next year.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with you, Tim. This is, it's exciting to finally see, you know, the, these upgrades to the lagoon happening. It's, it's about time, considering how long they've been over capacity. So, and now this sum is, is, is going to be covered under the funding, I'm assuming. Is that correct? So that's good news, because I, I just, I thought to myself, well, you know, it's a lot of money. We've already dished out, you know, $867,000, almost $868,000 to EVB for their work as of May 2022. Now I understand that the work that's coming, I understand the optimization, you know, things have changed, nothing's the same. You want to save money on this project, so I can see the, the, you know, the need to obviously have EVB on board. But it's a lot of money, because we've already spent the 867, no shovels in the ground. I don't, it's, it's, it just was kind of a little bit eye-popping to me. Then to turn around and, and then for 2025, you know, give them another $1,823. Seems like a lot of money for, for the project. If you could just, please explain that.
Yep, go ahead.
Through you, Miss Mayor. Just to add some context. So the 867 was the, the Contract Administration project that we awarded in 2022 to EVB. And what that entailed was taking the design that was completed in 2017, leaving it as it is, and then helping us prepare the tender documents, and then running the project. So that amount of money hasn't been spent with EVB Engineering. That amount of money is our commitment to them. So our, you know, it's, it's spent but hasn't been realized yet. Like the, the dollars haven't been out of the township account into EVB's account, because they haven't done the work for us yet. But we've made a commitment that they're going to be our contractor, they're going to be our project management during the, the project, and they're going to come up on site, they're going to do all the progress payments, they're going to make sure everything's done within specification, they're going to issue any changes that happen during the, the construction, they're going to deal with unforeseen conditions, they're going to do the concrete testing and, you know, all the engineering services that we need during the, your two-year construction project. So the additional funds that we're asking for here is for the design optimization and for changing our environmental approval. It's also two other points that are in there, is we, we're also expanding this to make sure we take into account all of the, the pieces that, that we need for a fully functioning system that's ready for development. So we actually also include, and I believe it's an attachment on there, that we also have an EA here for all the pumping stations in Alexandria. Because if we're increasing the pump, the capacity at our lagoon, we need to be able to get that material to the lagoon. So that's included. And that's, that's a $200,000 price tag. And then we've also got the expansion of the, the water catchment area for the Alexandria water treatment system. So to make sure that Lot Garry and Mill Pond can actually supply to the water treatment plant the amount of water that we need, and that's a price tag of $108,000. So it's a big sticker price, and it's a lot of stuff all summarized into my, so you don't have to look at the 15 different tables of, of moving parts that, that are across my desk. But, so it's, it's a very comprehensive solution. And yeah, this also includes the detailed design, dealing with the ministry, updating our environmental compliance approval. So it, it's quite thorough.
Okay, subsequent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I know that this company, EVB, know the project very well, since they've been working on it, you know, for some time. And there's value in that. But what about a competitive pro, pro, process in order to make sure we're getting the best dollar value possible?
Through you, Miss Mayor. So that competitive process would have been started in 2022. So once we actually awarded the Contract Administration, and we worked with, part of that Contract Administration was diving into the drawings and seeing what part, what issues there were, there were, where we said, okay, actually, there's, you know, over a million dollars in savings just by going and updating the technology, going and updating the, the, updating the technology, and also switching to just the optimized design. Because our design was done back in 2017, there's a lot to be done. So if we went and did a competitive bid process now to then have a designer and then a separate Contract Administrator, we would be, in my opinion, inviting change orders. Because if making one consultant responsible for those, for those engineering decisions, like if you have that Contract Administrator processing those change orders, and it's for the design that they made, then there's one level of responsibility. So the original designs, if you remember, are done by ACOM. So ACOM have, and if you remember back, for a, a good example, if you remember back to the, the Maxville Water Project, that was a project where there was several designers who had, who designed different portions. So the water tower and the, the booster station, these were all designed by different people at different levels. One of the huge advantages by go, to going to one designer is that we have one designer who looks at the whole project holistically. So where, in my experience, we see all change orders is in those gaps in between, you know, the water tower design and the distribution design, between these different areas that different consultants are responsible for. And when they don't integrate correctly, because someone's missed that little bit of gap, that's, that's where you start getting the huge change orders. So that's why we want to do this by negotiation. And then the other factor is, is that we know we're not getting ripped off, because we're very aware of the rates that EVB charges. We know that they're not marking them up for this specific project, and we also have other consultants that we're able to compare their rates to. So I don't have them in front of me, but in my report last year, you can see when we brought our, our sole sourcing for the small projects for EVB, which are the same rates that you see in here, they're comparable to every other consultant that, that we have. So.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Tim.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you. Public Works 2025, Large Item Pickup Programme. Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives report, PW 2025-13, Large Item Pickup Programme Update for information purposes only.
Thank you, councillor. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report is a recommendation for rates for the Large Item Pickup Programme for this year. As you're aware, we went through a, a large change with our Waste Department last year, where we closed the recycling plant due to the province taking over that responsibility. So that meant that this programme had to change, because we can't, before we were trying to utilize some underutilized staff to go and perform these services during that, just that it was an efficiency, really, that I, that was able to, to make good use of funds. So now that that opportunity isn't opportunity isn't there, we, we've had to look abroad to contractors. And through, still going with a slight subsidy, very similar to the first program, we've come up with a, a pricing structure that the treasurer will bring back in the fees and charges by law. And essentially, we've changed the structure so it would be a, a small pick, a small pickup, a medium pickup, and a large pickup. So the, so, and that would be $25 for a small pickup, $40 for a medium pickup, and $60 for a large pickup. To give you a good example, a small pickup would be a dishwasher, a mattress, a washing machine, or, you know, you could do several microwaves, something of that nature. A medium pickup would be a couch, refrigerator, office desk, and a large pickup would be, you know, a large sectional sofa or hot tub or something like that. So our, the old charge was, so in order for a small, it was $20, it goes up to 25, $30 goes up to 40, and the $40 charge goes up to $60. This, and we've got an estimated true cost there, and the subsidy by the township would be $30 for the smallest amount, $22 for the medium amount, and then $12 for the large amount. So we have, we have a, a budget put aside for this, and we estimated that if we got a thousand pickups this year, then if forty-five percent, we estimated a distribution of forty-five percent, thirty-five percent, twenty percent, and we figured we'd be in the range of utilizing that budget and, and providing the service across the township. So we, we went and got quotes from a few contractors. We brought those, brought those quotes in, and generally, the lowest quote there was used to come up with these numbers. The Large Pickup Program, we normally started in May. We're running a bit behind because we're revamping the, the online platform. The, the system that we were using before put, put its prices up, and we found a new platform that's actually, for using it how we want to use it, it's actually free. We need to test it. And there's also the Stripe updated its terms and conditions. They needed a bunch of different paperwork from us to, to make sure they can still provide that service. But we hope to get that program before the end of May. We hope to have our, our next date open.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Who will be managing the, the program? Who's taking that? And is that Caitlin that's going to be managing that at the desk?
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, we will, did we not go bring that stuff originally to our landfill? Or has it always gone to GFL?
It's always gone to GFL.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead. Counselor Martin?
Mayor, just quick, and just looking at the subsidy, and I, I'm presuming it was just a typo, but we got sixty percent on medium and sixty percent on large, which it's not. I got thirty-five and seventeen respectively. And I'm good with those numbers because obviously, as it goes up, more cost to the, to the homeowner is, is reasonable. Just wanted to make sure that those numbers, the dollar numbers are, are accurate in there.
Yes, my apologies.
Okay. Okay, further questions or comments? Go ahead. Deputy Mayor?
Just a question with regards to what, I mean, this, this program, the Large Item Pickup, has kind of replaced that old program, which was the two free dump days?
Still get that, I think.
We still get that?
Yeah.
Oh, so residents still get that?
This is a pickup at your place?
No, no, I know. But, but I didn't know whether that, that had canceled the two free dump days.
Nope, you still get it.
Okay, that, that's, that's excellent. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, moving on to Public Clerks 2025-14, Targeted Infiltration Projects. Deputy Mayor?
Switch here. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives Report PW 2025-14, Targeted Infiltration Projects for Information Purposes, and that council authorizes the reallocation of $100,000 from the previously approved $300,000 sewer lining project budget to implement two targeted stormwater infiltration reduction projects as detailed in Table 1.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we remember last year, we had a project that was, we do, we do it every, I think it's every six years. Every six years, we normally do half of the township. And we got such a good rate last year that we actually did the entire township in one year. So that program was cammering all of our sewer system. The results of that cammering, we found a lot of broken lead entrances, especially in Maxville, where the sewer was installed. And we found a few other places in Alexandria as well, which is more just the result of just an, an aged system. So we just wanted to reallocate $100,000 of the sewer lining to be able to, to go and hit those two areas, which would be a capital cost, just add to the value of our, our systems there. We also found that our original 300,000 that was budgeted for the, the lining along the Gary River was more than adequate for what we needed, probably closer to the range of 200,000 there. So that tender should be out this week, but based on last year's numbers and once, because part of it was actually getting the results from that cammering, the same section was done. We found that we need to, I thought that we really needed to do three sections. We only need to do two. And one of those sections is actually a little bit shorter. So I'm projecting, if our rates come in at the same amount, that's probably going to be a $180,000 project for the lining. And yeah, a small amount for, and, and these budgeted amounts would be more than adequate to take care of these spot repairs inside Maxville and Alexandria as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. And we'll move on to Rogers Roadside Maintenance. Counselor Massey?
Mr. Mayor, I got the, thank you. I got a few calls last week, and then people visited me at work complaining about the, this, the situation on the side road, like especially on the rural road, you know, where the cable went in this winter, although they did work through the winter, and it's good on them. But they left a bunch of rocks there, a bunch of, like, there's one side, I should show you, Tim, there's a road collapse, like the ditch has collapsed completely. So it's about this far from the asphalt. So there's a lot of work to be done, and people, before we get into the season, like within two, three weeks, our, I know our crew has to go across the, the back roads and do the grass cutting on the side. So that might endanger our equipment. And I, I'd like for us to, to notify Rogers, they, they have to get their stuff, their people out there and clean these big stones and everything. So I don't know, just bring, start bringing it up.
Yeah, I think we've all had complaints from various residents. So I think it's time that we, I know we were going to speak to them a few weeks ago, but where are we?
So through you, Mr. Mas. So we actually sent Leg Corps, who is the subcontractor for Rogers, a notice of default on May 7th with the, that we will rescind their permit, go out and remove the stones at their cost, if not taken care of by the end of this week. So as of the response that we got from, from the construction manager, I, I can just read it out here. It has photos attached as well. So we've, they have two crews actively picking up stone in North, in North Glengarry at the moment. Their supervisors, and Matt is the name of their supervisor, is also in the process of driving every meter that's built. And it's very evident that they've missed, that some of their crews missed the message of leaving those stones. He says those crews are subcontracted and will be cleaning up the rocks and leveling until it's done. And he'll, he's going to be backcharging his subcontractors. And yeah, so he says that, so the restoration started last week, and they've really got to the end of this week, until we start taking the, doing it ourselves and, and sending them the charges for it. So we also have, I'm, I don't have the email in front of me, but we also have our foreman, along with our student, going around and documenting them as they're cleaning up. So they are out there. They are cleaning it up. It is very disappointing that this is actually the second time that we've sent, had to send Rogers a notice of default for the stone issues. It was convenient for me because I was able to take my first notice of default and send it to them again. But it's, yeah, very disappointing from the, you know, the level of work that we've gotten from these contractors. I say that we've gotten, but that the contractors have provided for their, their residents.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that, so that, so make sure that everything is recorded, like the, I know if our crew is going out there, but just, especially on the machinery, because we do have a very expensive ditch cutter, grass cutter, and I'm sure, yeah, there's a major, major stones. And not only the rocks, and some people, we have a lot of very good residents that will cut the grass on the side of the, yeah, so make sure that it's, we got to make sure that it's leveled so they don't break their equipment also. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Counselor Massey, for bringing that forward. Items under the consent agenda. Counselor Kedell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Next regular meeting of, public meeting of councils, Monday, May 26, 2025. Sorry, notice of motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to table a, a notice of motion for a next council meeting, at which point I will be tabling a motion, asking staff to come back to council with several different options in order to be able to address what I consider to be a, a lack of adequate notification to the affected property owners and questions about setbacks with regards to the BESSS project. So I'll be asking for that at next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So staff, you taking note of that? Okay, so sorry, next regular public meeting is May 26, 2025. We have question period. Questions are to be just on what was presented in the council agenda today. Are there any questions? Yep. Can you come up to the microphone? Can you push out the?
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor. You just mentioned the setback and, and the BESSS project. And I realize this, you may think this is out of context. But through you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question that is directed at Chief Building Officer Jacob Reom, or anyone here who can answer for him. Has the building permit been issued for the industrial project, otherwise known as BESSS on Sky Road? The reason I ask my question is that there has been some equipment dropped on the proposed construction site. So I'm concerned that this is being done without a building permit. My experience as a former engineer is that permits should be on hold until all risk analysis and engineering studies are completed, as well as all nearby landowners' concerns are addressed. So has the building permit been issued, yes or no? May I please have an answer? Thank you.
So as of today, the building permit has not been issued. People are allowed to bring machinery onto property. They're also allowed to get, similar to if you were building a barn or something, you're allowed to get the property ready to do that before going to bill. I will say that the, that the building permit as per provincial law will be issued tomorrow morning.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
I just want you to think, Joseph, my name is Joseph, sorry. Thanks for talking tonight. I just want you guys to take that careful over because there's no turning back. We all have kids and crank kids. Everybody makes mistakes. We have time to stop it. Please.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I'm not, I'm not entertaining questions about BESSS. Okay, sorry, go ahead, sir.
Sir, I've sent you a letter the, in March. I was supposed to get called back ever since. I've got no detail. So far, it costs $1,806 million to the taxpayer. I don't know why you guys are not acting anything on it. And there's, I have many life threat and
So we've passed
intent on people's life that you guys should work on the public interest and make stuff public.
So I'll just interrupt you right there. That letter was passed on to the local police. It's, it's not something that it's under our jurisdiction. It's also under the provincial jurisdiction of what the services the city of Cornwall provide. So it, it has nothing to do with us personally.
On March 27, the Ottawa Police sent lights on his car at my location, arresting me, locking me up, five days, sending me in jail, not allowed any phone call, not allowed to contact my lawyer or anybody. That is against my human right. Last year, I was detained more than 30 days, 31 days, being shackled and tortured. I would remind you all that an attack on one is that attack on all, charter rights of rights and freedom. I am a veteran. I serve under NATO, and I've worked on NATO headquarters. I know all 32 country parts of NATO. An attack on me, it's an attack on NATO. The local police threatening my life, threatening my friends, it's an attack on all. If you want to dismiss that, it's supporting domestic terrorists. If you guys want to support domestic terrorists, go ahead. But you know what the consequences that will be. And my life has been on the line. I've been threatened. I've been tortured. I've been shackled. I've been detained, months, months over months. And I have friends who a few weeks ago had to have 50 dead body around them due to security detail. There is people dying, speaking out about the truth, and you guys refuse to acknowledge anything publicly. So I will thank you for your time, listening a little bit. But things should be public, and ask for the Ottawa Police. They refuse any phone call, any contact with me. I call them, they hang up. All they do is send more people at me, threatening me when God's shackling me, sending me somewhere to silence me. That cannot continue.
Okay, sir, but we have nothing to do with the Ottawa Police Department. We are governed
You mentioned you sent them to them.
We are governed under the Ontario Provincial Police.
And you guys are elected officials representing the interests of the taxpayer in the area. I would like to have you help me get, reach out to the Governor General of Canada, Mary Simons, so I can speak with her about the national security threat Canada is threatening right now. Because there's too many dead body, too much money spent for suppressing evidence against the truth, and people have the right to know.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, thank you.
Sir?
Don Ruthsay, I just, I just want to say a little something to this council, and it's about the best. I know you don't want to hear it, but I'm gonna, you're gonna hear it anyway, please. I propose something to all this council, to the fire chief, to the CEO, to Jacob, the building bylaw guy. We'll even supply the transportation, Jamie. We would like you to go to Mr. and Mrs. Automats, and we would like you to walk through their barn to the northwest side and see exactly how close this project is to them, and to see why this couple and their neighbors are not sleeping at night because they're terrified. And we shouldn't have to live like that in our community. I, I don't believe we should have to live like that. And this, you know, Karma Williams, you sent an email to Richard, and, and I read it. He showed it to me the other day. And, and your email was very good, but you said, for the information we had at the But you said, "For the information we had at the time..." And we, us taxpayers, believe that you people were misinformed about this project. And they didn't come clean with everything. Because we've been... One of our members has been to another project where there's a BESSS going. And they notified residents within five kilometers of the project. So we feel that you, as a council, were misinformed. We all make mistakes. But it's time to correct the mistake and stop it. Please. Because these... Would you people come to Joseph and Karen Automats? Would you do that for us?
We've had... So BESSS contacted them, and they don't want to hear anything. They don't want to hear... Listen, you can... Everybody in this room has their opinion. You know, as I've said, there were 200 people at that evening at the Sports Palace. There are 10,500 residents in North Glengarry. So it's every resident. And you can ask every member of council. We've had people call us that are very much in support of the project. We've gotten the information that we believe is correct. It's been tested. And we feel confident that it is going to go and nothing will happen to... In the future. And we feel confident with what they've said. And I look at the night, you know, because we all of council went to that meeting. And, you know, nobody... Every time somebody... They brought up something, nobody was listening. They wanted to have their own... You... People just wanted to hear what they believed. And we're the same way. We believe and through the... We've always... After all this started out, we thought we had gotten all the information. We feel we've still gotten all that information that we would have made the same decision.
But the public was not aware, Jamie.
That... But the public is... It's unfortunate. And this is what Counselor Williams is bringing up for our next meeting, is how we can... What we can do to change the future when we have... When we give notice at a zoning, for zonings that affect everybody. And so our point at right now is that we followed the provincial guidelines. Everything was done. It's unfortunate that nobody came out to the meeting. I mean, but, you know, as Counselor Caddell said today, you know, we've had... We've probably had, you know, in our term, 15 of those kind of meetings that nobody shows up to. So it was not a surprise to have nobody show up to it. But, you know, I look at the people that the older mats... They were all notified. They knew this. No, they did. They were notified.
They're right there.
Well, anyways, I can... We could argue about it all day. But I'm very sorry. There really is just not anything that we can do. And the building permit will be issued tomorrow.
They don't care about people's lives.
Okay.[1479.71]